Medford City Council Committee of the Whole, February 20th, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Callahan.
Counsel Callahan is at home with a sick kid, so maybe joining us on Zoom, but I don't see her right now.
Vice President Collins.
Present.
Counsel Lozado.
Present.
Counsel Lemming.
Present.
Counsel Scarpelli.
Counsel Sain.
Present.
President Hayers.
Present. Six present, one absent. The meeting is called to order. There will be a meeting of the Medford City Council Committee of the Whole, February 20th, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the Medford City Council Chamber. And that meeting, the action and discussion item 24043 submitted by Mayor Brianna Lungo Kern, request to approve fiscal year 2024 Community Preservation Fund Annual Application Appropriations. We have, from the Community Preservation Committee, I respectfully request and recommend your honorable body approve the following appropriations, following recommendations. One, requesting appropriation of $69,000 from the CPA General Reserve to housing families for the homelessness prevention pro bono legal services program. Requesting the appropriation of $50,000 from the Historic Preservation Reserves to City of Medford Cemetery Division for the Oak Grove Cemetery Access Road Study. Requesting appropriation of $200,000 to the cemetery for the Oak Grove Cemetery Access Buildings Restoration Project. Requesting the appropriation of $229,000 to the Office of Planning Development and Sustainability for the Logan Park Natural Play Area Project. Requesting the appropriation of $10,000 for the Salem Street Burying Ground Conditions Assessment. Requesting appropriation of $205,525 for the Tufts Park Basketball Court Resurfacing Project. Requesting the appropriation of $104,625 for the Cape and Park Basketball Court Resurfacing Project. Requesting the appropriation of $99,965 to M Belt for the ADA Pathways and Parking Improvements Project at the Medford Brooks Estate. Requesting the appropriation of $98,275 to the Medford Brooks Estate Land Trust for the East Elevation ADA Improvements. And requesting the appropriation of $4,800 for the Cross Street Cemetery Conditions Assessment. That's going to the cemetery trustees. The CPC's recommendation letters are attached and incorporated. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully submitted, Brianna Lungo Kern, Mayor. And at this point, I will turn it over to our CPC manager and our CPC Chair, Theresa Dupont and Roberta Cameron, to give a short presentation. And then we'll hear from the applicants, or at least some of them. Floor is yours.
Hello, and thank you, everybody. My name is Theresa Dupont. I'm the CPA manager here for the City of Medford.
And Roberta Cameron, Chair of the CPC.
Thank you. So tonight before you, we have our annual funding round appropriations. This is something that we've been doing every year for the past six years now. So typically, just for everybody's information, this is discussed at the committee meetings held by the Community Preservation Committee. We make recommendations to fund. And then at that point, the paper comes before the city council, and you actually vote on the appropriations. So that is the, that's why we're here today, to talk about these applications in particular.
I would just like to say a couple of words about how the applications come to the, to be recommended to the city council. Every year, the Community Preservation Committee holds a grant funding round where we invite people to submit applications for CPA funding. The Community Preservation Committee reviews those applications and discerns what, which applications meet the community needs that have been studied and identified. And the, the, the committee then recommends the funding for the city council to approve. And so the funds cannot be spent unless they are first recommended by the CPC and approved by city council. And this year, we had an unusually large amount of funds that were requested off-cycle before the regular funding round completed. So those were early applications that we were asked to consider because, early because they had an urgent need. And some of those early applications included the Walkling Court Development Project, which requested $800,000 for affordable housing. And another was the McGlin School Playground, which requested $400,000 for, for the renovation of the McGlin School Playground. And so those, there were also some additional smaller projects that were received earlier. So this is the remainder of the projects that applied for funding this funding round.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to go in order of the letter you sent in here from applicants and ask questions?
Certainly. Just so you know, the applicants are unavailable tonight. There was really only two that were exterior to, outside of this building. So unfortunately, they weren't unable to make tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of the applicants.
Okay, great. Before we do that, do we have any general questions from the council about this funding round? Counsel Scarpelli? I've got 28 people on Zoom. Yep.
I think the only question that we're going to hear tonight, which we're going to talk, I think that what we're seeing right now with all of the adjustments that this council for homeowners and taxes, I think, you know, what the key is understanding that this council, what direction we're going for, assisting for the housing. So the questions I think that get to my, that I want you to really help us understand this is the portion that goes to true affordable housing. The question that's brought to my attention was how much of the important affordable housing trust fund? And or has no one, can we have to apply to that more specifically, specific reason, more specific product?
Right. Because the Affordable Housing Trust Fund was just established this past year, and actually, the Affordable Housing Trust Board itself has not yet been appointed, there hasn't been anyone to apply on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund yet. However, the committee anticipates that that will be a factor in the future and anticipates future applications for funds to the Affordable Housing Trust. But that hasn't occurred yet because it hasn't existed up until now.
Good answer. So I think that question is, if it wasn't set up, could it be a certain amount of money expected that this is already an issue? This is already a problem that we can start meeting this one?
We have.
It's a certain amount of funding that we hold to make sure that, with the question we have right now, the question I'm trying to receive is the funding that's going on to legal services. It's truly, you know, there's other categories for legal services for issues when it comes to housing. But when it comes to truly helping our homeless or accessibility, it's really just, you know, this will be a great, great area.
So just a couple of points to respond to that question. First, there, we have in the past set aside funds when we didn't have any applications for affordable housing projects in that year. We have elected to set aside funds to put in the Affordable Housing Reserve to spend in the future. Part of those funds that we set aside in the past have gone to help the Walkling Court Project, for example. So, yeah.
What people don't realize is $800,000 on certain, actually, before this, this way.
Yes, yeah. That was already funded this year. So it didn't appear in this round, I mean, on your agenda today because that was already approved at a previous meeting.
That was a big, so.
Yeah.
And I know that, again, for the people that don't know, the great thing that everybody, every, or everything that you can't follow the future, the fund that's even one that, it's historical sites, it's parks and playgrounds, it's housing, what else?
Those are the three categories.
delivery. And then it is a mandatory percentage that every year.
A minimum of 10% a year has to go to each of those three. And then the remaining is, can go to any of those three.
The reason why I bring this up is it's been a crazy week this week, talking and, some great conversation both ways. But I think that the idea that you're really looking at, or this council possibly taxing more when we can now have an identified system that's already set up. But we know, we know that we can actually go and, that there's always going to be at least 10% or maybe more that will support the housing concerns we have in the community. So I appreciate some of these questions.
So I just wanted to make a, to answer a couple of things in, in response to your question. The first is that this year, with these projects that are on the slide today, it's about an even split between the three program areas, which has been our goal generally. The other thing that I wanted to mention was with, with respect to housing families, the CPC actually cannot, CPA funds cannot go to legal services. What these funds are going for is to, to pay rental arrears that their legal services are helping with. So when they have a pro bono client tenant who comes to them, they, through their funding sources, not CPA, have a pro bono lawyer available. But sometimes they need to pay back rent in order to, to settle a case. And the CPA funds can go toward paying the rental arrears.
That's, thank you for the clarity. I think that's important. So appreciate that.
Thank you, Counsel Scarpelli. Madam Clerk, could you note that Counsel Callahan is here on Zoom? And I'll go to Counsel Lemming.
Thank you. This, so part, part of, part of this is not so much to ask questions, but I previously was on the CPC, so I just felt like adding a little bit more context about the nature of the potential relationship between the CPC and the Affordable Housing Trust. So typically, affordable housing projects that come before the CPC are just, you'll get like a big project once every couple of years. So the Walkling Court Development was, I mean, I think, I think that that would, the final price tag for that would be over $100 million, of which the CPC is donating $800,000 this year in trouble with the CPC. And please correct me if any of this is inaccurate, but it's just, you know, the, is that they have to spend a certain, they have to spend a certain amount from taxes every year. The benefit of the Affordable Housing Trust, in this case, is that it allows money to be collected over time so that when one of those projects does come along, you could end up then putting towards a greater amount of capital towards that project. There is a bit of trouble with multi-year funding towards the Walkling Court redevelopment that the CPC was running into during my time there. I think that the, I think that the issue that we're sort of seeing with, with the Affordable Housing Trust and like potential revenue streams into it is volume. So the CPC will be a very important feeder into it. It is. However, like I said, the Walkling Court, just for an example, I believe, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's something over, like over $100 million the CPC takes in. And again, just ballpark here, around $2 million-ish here, of which a third of that can go to affordable housing. So if we are going to be able to fund affordable housing developments like that, the CPC is an important source, could be an important source of funds. However, other, it is necessary to have that coming from different areas.
Homeowners, so.
Among, so the.
Let's, let's just.
Yeah, let's.
I'm sorry. Do the chair.
Yeah.
When I recognize you.
Yeah. So this, so this will, this will come up in the regular meeting, so I don't want to. But I was just sort of clarifying the CPC and the Affordable Housing Trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lemming. Any other questions from members of the council? All right, let's go through in order. We have our first one, which we already got into, but the $69,000 to housing families for homelessness prevention pro bono legal services program. Anything you want to add? And I know we've funded it in the past.
We have funded it in the past, and right now, it is one of the very few resources that the city can offer to folks that are facing homelessness challenges and rental arrears. With COVID pandemic, there came a large surge of funding that helped with those type of programs. But since the pandemic, I can't remember the exact word, but officially, I think, emergency order is officially over. That funding has dried up. So there are fewer and fewer resources available for folks in this type of situation. We're very happy with the service that Housing Families is providing to our residents. I personally was the head clerk of the planning department and fielded a lot of those calls. And I will say that Housing Families, nobody's ever called to complain about that service. So I personally feel strongly about this, this resource that is provided to our residents. But any other questions?
Any questions from councilors on that item number one? Counsel Sain?
Not a question, but as, as you noted, we've been funding this for a while. And there's, there have been no complaints. It's gone pretty smoothly, so I feel very comfortable with this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sain. On the second, the appropriation of $50,000 for the Cemetery Division from the Historic Preservation Reserve for the Oak Grove Cemetery Access Road Study.
Yes. So Oak Grove has been a victim of deferred maintenance for, for many, many years, including looking into an access road to the historic section of the cemetery. Currently, right now, it's, it's challenging for accessibility. So this access road study would expand the potential access to this section via vehicular traffic. We are looking into a full master plan for Oak Grove TBD on that one, but this would be incorporated into that full master plan. We want, we want the cemetery to be accessible. We want everybody to enjoy it, be able to visit their family members that are there, as well as enjoy it as recreation space.
Thank you. Any questions from councilors on that item? Seeing none. The appropriation of $200,000 from the General Reserve to, CPA General Reserve to the Cemetery Division for the Cemetery Access Buildings Restoration Project.
Yes. So the purpose for this project, in a prior funding round, the CPC funded a study for the restoration, actually, two studies for the restoration of the caretaker's residence, which houses the office for the cemetery division in the basement, and the garage, which is a historic building. And so they're going to combine those into a single project. And with the next request of funds, we'll begin working toward the actual restoration, implementation of the studies for those buildings.
Great.
And just to be clear, no CPA funds, it was a provision of, of the funding, no CPA funds will be used on the residential portion of the caretaker's building. I wanted to point that out.
Great. Any questions on that item? Seeing none. The fourth item, $229,000 from the CPA General Reserve to the Office of Planning Development and Sustainability for the Logan Park Natural Play Area Project.
All right. So this project would update some of the playground elements there currently there at Logan Park. The theme there would be to use natural resources. Forgive me, our planner has a specific theme in mind for it. But essentially, it would be utilizing tree trunks, boulders for natural play for our children.
Justin, can you just shut off your microphone? Sorry.
Can't have too many open mics?
Yeah, well, once you get out there, they're like behind the speakers.
Sure, sure. So it's, it's playground that hasn't been touched in a while, and we're getting some fun playgrounds there.
Counsel Scarpelli?
If I can, thank you for the, this is great. It, this is what, you see the excitement where the, when people can see the tangible changes, the upgrades to important pieces like parks and playgrounds, I think it's important. But do you know a part of this is, is for accessibility apparatus? So our kids with special needs can have an opportunity to play in all these playgrounds? Just the one at the McGlin, I think the one at Car Park maybe too, is it?
So because of current building and playground standards, any new playground construction is going to have to meet basic accessibility standards. The McGlin School Playground was designed to go beyond to really make an integrated play space for the children. But this is going to be more of a natural play space, but it will be accessible.
Okay, thank you.
And another provision of the award was that the Office of Planning Development and Sustainability will seek community feedback on the, the final design. So if you live in the Logan Park area, keep an eye out.
Thank you. On, any further questions? Seeing none on the fifth item, appropriation of $10,000 for the Salem Street Burying Ground Conditions Assessment.
So this is for the Salem Street Burying Ground, which is the one that's right here in Medford Square. And the wall of the burying ground needs restoration. If you take a close look at it, it's looking very rough in a lot of places. So this is just the first step toward restoration. Before we actually bring someone out there to fix it, we need to understand exactly what the treatment plan is needed for that.
Great. Any questions from members of the council? Seeing none. Number six, $205,525,000 from the CPA General Reserve to the Parks Division for Tufts Park Basketball Court.
So, oh, actually, it, it's kind of the same story for the, as well as Cape and Park. So I'll kind of speak to both of these applications. These were applications that we received in the 2022 funding round, I believe. They were not funded at that point because of just budget. We deferred those and invited the Parks Department to reapply in following years. This is that, those two projects there. So again, parks are in desperate need of resurfacing on those, on those play surfaces.
Any questions on that one?
And I'll, I'll just say the same thing for Cape and Park.
Cape and Park as well?
Yes.
That's the next one. That's $106,625 from the General Reserve, CPA, to the Parks Division for Cape and Park.
Correct.
All right. Number eight. Requesting the appropriation of $99,965 from the Historic Preservation Reserve to Medford Brooks Estate Land Trust for ADA pathways and parking improvements. I'll let you do it. I might be better.
Thank you. This is, again, a continuation of a project that we have been funding in the past. Previously, the CPA program funded design of a driveway and parking area to serve the Brooks Estate. This is a critical piece to making this city-owned property actually serve the public. At the moment, it's very difficult to use the building because it's hard to get there. And with restoration of the driveway and creation of accessible parking and parking to serve the building, it can actually be used as a public building, as it should be. So this is, again, the first step toward construction to help us get there.
Amazing. And the only thing I'll add is that it's partially being matched by state funding through the ARPA program. And the only reason I know that is because I'm the city council appointee to the M Belt Board. So I'm very involved and invested in the project.
Any questions from councilors on Brooks Estate? On the next project for Brooks Estate is the $98,275 from the Historic Preservation Reserve for the East Elevation ADA Improvements.
So the Brooks Manor, Shepherd's Brooks Manor, the, there is an elevation, east side elevation that is in need of some drainage updating as well as accessibility. Right now, it's a concrete sidewalk that is kind of broken up and, again, deferred maintenance. So this would bring it up to accessibility standards to make this building accessible to, to folks.
Yeah. And it's, it's the main accessible entry.
Yes.
Great. Any questions on that one? All right, last one. $4,800 from the Historic Preservation Reserve to the Cemetery Trustees for the Cross Street Cemetery Conditions Assessment.
Thank you. This was a, what we consider to be a small grant application. So it was received out of cycle, but it happens to align with when these other projects were being considered by city council anyway. And so we have a streamlined process for people to apply for small grants. These grants have to meet all of our other eligibility requirements. But for projects that have less than, are requesting less than $5,000, they can go through this expedited process. So this application is to conduct a condition assessment to restore a section of the historic, a historic section of the cemetery at Oak Grove.
And, and not to editorialize, but this is the, Cross Street Cemetery was what used to be, was when, it was displaced by the construction of Interstate 93, so all those graves were moved to Oak Grove.
Correct. Exactly.
Fantastic. Well, that's a ten. Any questions on Cross Street Cemetery? From members of the council? Okay. Any general questions from members of the council? Oh, Counsel Sain?
General question. So could you give us an idea as to, when you're going through these every year, how many applicants do you get versus how much money are you able to award?
In most years, up until now, we have been able to fund all of the projects that had applications that, that made it all the way through the application cycle. Sometimes in the vetting process, we might determine that a project wasn't ready to go yet, needed some more planning, needed more coordination between the stakeholders. But all of the projects that have made it through the funding cycle so far have been able to be funded. Last year, we had a couple of very large requests, and we ended up having to break two of the requests, ask them to come back. Last year, they requested more than we could fund. So we asked them to break it and into two asks and come back this year. And those were two of the projects that we funded early in the funding cycle. And then we are this year able to fund projects that were postponed last year. There were three projects that were postponed in order to make room for those big projects last year. So we've been able to fund everything so far that were really viable projects, helping the grantees, the applicants through the grant cycle to make sure that their project really met the, the community need and was going to be a successful project.
But I'm hearing that sometimes there's a delay in how, how quickly people can acquire.
There's a limit to how much funding we have, realistically. There is not a limit to how much money we need to fix everything in Medford, and we can't all at once. So we have so far been fortunate enough to be able to respond to all of the requests as they come. But the requests have increased every year. The amount of funding requested has increased every year faster than the rate of revenue growth. And so we're going to have tough choices ahead of us, absolutely. If we're not going to continue to be able to fund everything, we're going to have to, yeah, like I said, make some tough choices going forward.
That's really helpful to hear. And in the future, if we have projects coming on board, like what we anticipate, some projects that we've already mentioned in this meeting, seems like we might not be able to meet the full need of those projects through CPA funding.
Potentially. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, Counsel Scarpelli?
Thank you. That brings up a good point, Ms. Cameron. I think that, especially this evening, as we vet other issues out, the affordable housing, give us, give us some ideas of some, some of the projects that were denied for affordable housing this round.
We haven't denied any projects for affordable housing. We have funded the full amount requested for two housing construction projects over the six years that the CPA program has been in existence. That was for Medford Community Housing, which is building a three-unit building on Felsway West, and the Walkling Court Redevelopment Project over, off of Auburn Street and North Street. And then we have, in the past, funded an emergency rental assistance program during the pandemic. And then we've funded this, the, the funds to supplement the pro bono legal services program at Housing Families. And there was also one affordable housing construction project that we approved early on that fell through because of their own problems unrelated to the city's support.
Okay. So I only bring this up because what the, the tone we're seeing lately, rent control, the tax question this evening, and Community Preservation Act has funded all of our affordable housing issues so far to date. I think that's amazing. So that, that speaks a lot. I think that speaks volumes of what direction we should really be considering when you talk about affordable housing needs and, and how it affects the rest of this community. So thank you.
I don't think.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Scarpelli. I'm going to Counsel Callahan, then Counsel Sain, then Counsel Collins. And I will note that the value of properties in the City of Medford is about.
You can, you can note anything as the chair.
I can state facts.
I can say the fact, George. You can step off, but George, what's the fact? You cannot.
I can state facts.
You cannot. Read Robert's rules. You cannot.
It's the fact that the property value of the city is $13 billion, and we've spent a combo million.
Understand your role.
I do, sir.
It's, it's.
Counsel Scarpelli? Counsel Scarpelli? I can state facts, sir. And don't, don't, no outbursts.
You're wrong.
I'm not. Counsel Callahan?
Thank you. And I really commend the CPC for all the work that you do in, you know, the whole approval process and researching all these projects. I want to understand a little bit better the process. So there are applications that come in. Are those applications ones that have been, do people go through the planning department? Or is it simply, are these organizations coming to you directly? Is there, what is? Is there, what is, and I guess what I'm asking about is, I've been hearing from constituents about sort of equity across the city. Folks in Berry Park, Berry Park or Berry Playground, thinking that they maybe are not getting as much attention and as much funding. So I'm just curious if, like, who, whose job would it be to look across the city and determine which of these sort of resurfacing projects or any of these projects are the ones that are most needed and ensure that those applications are getting in?
In terms of, of the process, thank you, Counselor Callahan, for your question. The, right now, it's, it's a little bit of everything. Applications come to us. We also identify needs in the community and perhaps approach folks about, you know, just awareness of CPA in general as a potential funding opportunity. In terms of the, the equity of it, I, we hear you. This year for our funding round, we intend to add additional information and listening sessions in our outreach to folks to hear from residents, hear from the community, hear from leaders in the community, what they would like to see. That's outside of City Hall. Inside of City Hall, we do have a capital improvements projects tracking as well as park projects, specifically to park projects. So I hear about Berry Park, and that has been identified in our park project spreadsheet. The issue comes to staffing. We want to do park projects everywhere. It's funding and staffing. We just don't have enough folks right now or money to be doing all these projects simultaneously. I will say that Berry Park has been identified. I don't want to say exactly which year, but in the coming soonish years, that has been identified as a major park project to take on. Right now, we're in the midst of Car Park, Gillis Park, McGlynn. So we've got some, some serious projects going right now. But in terms of the equity of the application process, I mean, my name is Teresa Dupont, T. Dupont, at medford-ma.gov. I'd love to hear from folks about what they want to see this money going towards in the community, as well as, again, from our, from anybody who has an idea. We, we want to hear from folks.
Thank you, Teresa. Counselor Sang, Counselor Collins.
So I think what I'm hearing from that is the need is deeper than just the applicants themselves. Oftentimes, there are projects that don't, aren't even applied for or aren't considered ready enough just because we don't have the money for that in the first place. And the city departments know, and applicants know that it's not realistic to get that money at this point in the project process. Would that be correct?
Yes, yes, that would be correct.
Great. Also, I'd add that the city, in addition to CPA funds for these larger projects, the city is relying on funding from multiple sources to come in. So in the past year, we've been able to apply ARPA funding to some of these projects, but we also receive grants from the state that are matched with the CPA funds. And we, the state grant funding, we may be able to address one park a year. So it's not a matter of if, but when can we get to the parks that are next in line for improvement?
So for big projects, oftentimes, most times, we need multiple revenue sources. And that's helpful to note, I think, as well. And I, I think, you know, when we think about the parks that are on our list, right? Like, if we have other strong revenue channels to fund certain projects that are covered by, you know, that cover some of these, right? That might free up funding to do some of the other really important work. Would that be accurate?
That would be accurate. It's a bit of a dance. We're always doing funding dances here in City Hall. So, but there have been instances where, I wish I had a better term besides rob Peter to pay Paul, but we have shifted money around to be able to balance it all out. Because CPA can only be used for certain things. There's a lot of restrictions about what you can spend that money on. Same thing with CDVG and ARPA and all the other fun acronyms that float around here in City Hall. There are rules about how we can spend that money. So sometimes we just balance it out and help each other out.
I think that's helpful context. I think, like, the CPA projects are all excellent, that they really help our community, know that, you know, this isn't an all-beyond. There's so much more need than what we see on the paper. It's really helpful context for us to consider other policies going forward.
Thank you, Counselor Sang. Vice President Collins?
Thank you, President Behrs. Thank you so much, Teresa, Roberta, for your presentation. I always look forward to these meetings once or twice a year because the CPC and city staff always does such a great job of putting together, you know, not just gassing it up, but it's always a really great set of projects that I think, you know, we can be really proud to fund. And, you know, looking at this list of the award summary for fiscal year '24, these projects are spread out all across the community. Like you said, there's a pretty good mix between those three eligibility categories. And that's always really great to see. It's exciting to have a mix of projects that are in their inception and those study phases, and then ones where we can see that we've been investing in these projects over years and pushing them forward to completion and being even better resources for the city to enjoy. And that's just, you know, it's nice when you tee us up like that. We just get to vote on good stuff. That's always great. And I think it's, it's always good to have the conversation about when we're talking about investing in capital projects, investing in open space, investing in affordable housing, you know, to have that conversation about what role does the CPA funding in that? Because it's, like you said, that's a, you know, that's a, that, that scope can be, you know, as, as big as we're willing to open our eyes to see. And it's, it's good to have the conversation about what role can this play? Where can we put this money? How far does that get us? And to, you know, continue to have that conversation about contextualizing, what else would we do if the limit was higher? So thank you for this great set of awardees. Thank you for the context. Much appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Any further questions? All right, seeing none. We'll open it up to members of the public. If you have a comment on a specific item under this CPC request for appropriation, you may come to the podium or raise your hand on Zoom.
Kelly Catallo, 23 Salem Street in Medford. I'd like to point out point of information, so.
You can't make points of information, but you can give public comment.
Okay, can I just speak regular?
Yes.
Okay. I'm red, I'll face it. Everyone's here because of the sales tax thing. But I get that you want some money for affordable housing. So I went back through from the CPA site. Thank you, they did a great job. And in the last seven years, they have estimatedly collected $7 million from the taxpayers in Medford, which was an extra 1.5% that was added onto their property tax. They have spent $1,087,000 on housing, which is about 25%. And I keep hearing Medford needs affordable housing, and there could have been a larger portion of that. But I'm not surprised to hear that the majority of the applications that they got were for the parks and for the recreation and stuff like that. Medford is almost 40% conservation land, which we have, Alicia, to thank for protecting that. And that's what the people of Medford love. They love their history. We are the fourth oldest English settlement in the country. So yes, they want to protect their history. We're not seeing applications for affordable housing, but the point of information that I want to make is that the application that came in for $69,500, it says in their request that it was for attorney fees to defend tenants that were being evicted. So if you are, if you don't have the money for your rent, you're considered indigent. If you go to district court, you can fill out the application, and they will need an attorney of the day. The courthouse, and I did check this with housing attorneys today, still has a two-tier system where it's mediation before it goes into court. So nobody's being thrown there. If you think that we need $69,500 to create housing, that would be wonderful. But I don't think that we need to be paying attorneys with it. And you do have the Affordable Housing Trust right now. And cities do have the right to earmark a certain percentage of CPA funds, actually above your one-third if it's going to affordable housing. And this, this committee, your body, has the right to do that. And if we're not seeing that it's needed now, I question if there's any need to charge the taxpayers another 2% when they sell their house as well. So I'd ask you. You guys have a lot on your plate, I get it. You have full-time jobs. But before you approve this round of CPA funding, I would ask that you go back and you actually read the request from these people. Because $69,500, it's a lot of money to a first-time buyer. It's a lot of money to somebody that doesn't have the money to pay their mortgage because their rent's not being paid by their tenant. The homeowners in the community matter just as much. Thank you.
All right. Any motions on the floor? Counselor Collins?
I would motion to report out favorably.
Motion to report the paper out of committee by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Lemming. Since we have a member on Zoom, all votes will be roll call votes. Madam Clerk, please follow the roll.
Counselor Callahan?
Yes.
And, and.
Yes.
Very good. Okay, Vice President Collins?
Yes.
Counselor, yes. Counselor Lemming?
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli?
Yes.
Counselor Sang?
Yes.
President Behrs?
Yes, seven affirmative, none negative. This is reported out of committee. Any further motions? Counselor Sang to adjourn, seconded by.
Second.
Counselor Collins, all is in favor. Actually, I can't, we have to roll call it, sorry. That's annoying. Madam Clerk, please follow the roll. We're going to be doing a lot of that tonight.
Yeah, yeah, okay. This is to adjourn?
Yes, to adjourn.
Counselor Callahan?
Yes.
Vice President Collins?
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro?
Yes.
Counselor Lemming? Counselor Scarpelli?
Yes.
Counselor Sang?
Yes.
President Behrs?
Yes, seven affirmative, zero negative, motion passes, and the meeting is adjourned. We'll see everyone at 7 o'clock.